Good evening, and welcome to the school committee meeting of May 1st. Seems like this is becoming a weekly thing. I'd ask you to remember that this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if it's needed, so keep that in mind, please. Also, I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. It's another busy evening, and it's been a busy, busy budget season. There's not even a question about that. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th.
Motion to table both.
Oh, you don't, you want to table them both?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to table April 10th and April 24th. Minutes. Discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Fred. I forgot about that. Okay, superintendent's report.
So, before we get into any type of budget discussion, I just have two items that I'd like to address the committee with. Our next scheduled meeting is obviously next week, so we'll keep up the weekly meeting, but George and I have a commitment. Although our budget has been difficult, we always go to a recruiting fair at Bridgewater State College to look or Bridgewater State University, because we will have openings through some attrition, no matter where we fall tonight. We will have openings in the district that we need to fill. So I'm asking if the committee can reschedule the 8th to the 15th.
Anyone have any issues with that? Chris, Mike, Robbie, Dan, Fred, Mr. Boyce? Ally?
I didn't put my book.
Okay.
And the second, as a reschedule, moving the May 22nd meeting, the reorg meeting, after the town vote, to Monday, the 20th, instead of Wednesday, the 22nd, as I have a commitment on the 22nd.
So you're gonna move, you wanna move from a Wednesday to a Monday?
Correct.
For the reorg.
Any issues? Go around again. Chris, anybody?
I'm good. I thought it was Monday, actually.
Actually, so no one have one Wednesday that night? Okay? All right, that's good.
Okay. Thank you. As far as moving forward to our budget and local assessment, the documents that are in your packet are the same as the packet last week. What the level of cut would be, under level services at 12 and 1/2, and I know you stayed at 12 and 1/2 as far as an assessment last week. Also, you have your assessment sheet, which lists the numbers going down to, from 12 and 1/2 to 1 and 1/2. As I said, there will be people and positions impacted at anything under 12 and 1/2.
I'd like to make a motion that we set the assessment at 8 and 1/2 percent.
I have a motion, excuse me. I have a motion in a second to set the assessment at 8 and 1/2, 8.5. Fred made it, and I think Dan seconded it, or Mr. Boyce, so they co-seconded it. I don't care how you record it. Discussions. Fred?
Just want to make light that the, both boards are selectmen to my knowledge, and I can, I was there in Whitman last night, where they were able to come up with a plan to increase revenue in order to get us from 6 and 1/2 percent to the 8 and 1/2 percent. The 2 percent extra is very much appreciated in my mind. While it doesn't give us level services, what I think it does is it allows us to make the best we can out of a very bad situation. By no means do I feel satisfied and feel happy about this, or am jumping up and down thrilled. But whereas, I believe both towns, both FinComs, as well as both the boards of selectmen, you know, have been able to find this in their budgets, I don't know that we could expect anything better, and that's the spirit in which this is. But I would also want to say the caveat in my heart and mind is that we get right back to work almost immediately after town elections, et cetera, and we start working on a fall override and do something that is going to not only restore what we're losing on this sheet of paper, but also allow the voters and taxpayers of both towns to fund us to the level and provide the education that we should be providing to students in both
Anyone else? Mr. Crata?
I think I'm as concerned as to what the administration feels and what their thoughts are as far as going forward, if it is at 8 and 1/2 percent as opposed to the original.
So, we've said in the past, you know, we've cut some different things, and at an 8 and 1/2, it's 1.7, $1,1748,000 and change that we're cutting from a level service where we originally started at. $897,000 in people, $290,000 in things that we were looking at, including legal and other types of supply areas, and $561,000 in E and D. We're in the process of restructuring what we do here as well. There will be an impact to service, there will be an impact to technology, there will be an impact to facilities, there will be an impact to, in central office. We are eliminating middle school foreign language. There is an impact at language at this point, and we're also looking at an impact in guidance services at the high school, an impact at the elementary level, and an impact at the middle school level. So there is an impact to our service delivery for our students, there is an impact delivery to, or there's an impact to parents if they need maybe to call up and say, "I want to do something in technology," maybe somebody's not answering the phone. Same in facilities. So there will be an impact. When you lose 19 positions, 19 people, whether it's a person or a position through attrition, there will be an impact to student and what we do here as far as education. One thing that we've talked about and we've held true is our social-emotional learning. We are looking at making sure that our students are safe, and they are being taken care of through our counseling services moving forward. It's a, it's a, it's a big issue in our state, it's a big issue in our country, and even at an 8 and 1/2, we're gonna make sure our students are whole in some respect. There will be an impact, like I said, to facilities, to technology. Losing middle school foreign language, and I do believe a parent came up and said, "We are in the bottom 36, 34 out of 36 in this area as far as foreign language delivery." In a global society, in a global economy, our students need to have foreign language. We do, we do not do that well, and part of this cut, or part of this 8 and 1/2, will impact middle school foreign language. My thought process moving forward, and I'll throw this out there to both town administrators, the selectmen and the FinComs, this talk of override in the fall has been out there. After, this is all said and done, hopefully next Monday, I'm available from then on to start putting a plan together to satisfy the needs of the school district, from soup to nuts, from technology services to foreign language to social-emotional learning for our struggling students and our brightest kids. We need to put together a plan to make sure that we hit everybody and we're an inclusive school district. So I'm calling them out and saying, "We've talked about this for years, and through this whole budget process, we've talked about a fall override. It needs to, it needs to happen, and the schools need to be a part." The schools also need to be a part of the budget discussions going forward, not the last in. We're the biggest, we have the most, we have our kids, and we're the biggest employer in both towns. We need to be at the forefront and that conversations in both towns at the table as we move forward. I appreciate what everybody's doing in this process. I know, know there's not a lot of money out there, but when heads are put together and some sacrifices are made in the town, and people are now discussing things, things can happen. This is better than the zero and the negative six that I was proposed with in Whitman in December. It's better than the four, it's better than the six and 1/2, it's not the 12 and 1/2, but it's something that, that I think is, is something we have to swallow and move forward with.
Chris?
I guess someone could help me understand the process, if we do have an override in Whitman in the fall, how those funds are divvied up, and how does it work with Hanson not having an override, you know, in terms of both towns?
So I think both, both folks have talked about that now. Both folks have talked about building our foreign language, building full daycare, doing an operational override. I don't know the semantics of that. I also don't want it to be, and this is my personal opinion, I just don't want it to really just focus in on schools. I think it needs to be community-wide, so that everybody is bought into this, because I don't want to, as we have seen in the past, put department against department, and that's not getting us anywhere. So, everybody has to be valued, and I don't mean, I don't mind us being alone on an island sometimes, and that's not a bad place to be. When we're talking about the budget, I want us to be a full team approach as far as every department in both towns.
I guess, I'm still, does anyone have any insight on if Hanson doesn't do an override or what he does, or how that works?
It'll, it'll have, it's got some semantics to play into it, Chris. Details need to be worked out as we move forward, because it'll have to be an agreement, but we're gonna work on that as soon as we get through where we are. It'll play out, you'll see, both towns, because there are some difficulties in doing it. They both have to come up with some sort of an agreement. But first, we have to build to a figure, is what Jeff's talking about. We have no figure, and, you know, we've gotta get that started in the beginning. Okay. Chris, and Fred, and Bob. Chris?
So, Jeff, I think well said. I think you brought up two points that I, were in the back of my mind. One, I think, for whatever reason, the schools seem to be last at the table, right? So it's kind of the, the pie has been divvied up, and here's what's left, and now, deal with it, which is a challenge. And I think, when we look at this, and I understand from what I've seen and heard and read, that the, that various departments are making certain sacrifices as far as shifts and coverage, but at the end of the day, again, to my knowledge, I think what we heard last meeting was, it was half a position in both towns combined that was being lost. We're certainly looking at a much higher number in the school system. So I think as we move forward, that's something that's, that's really important. I think, I understand where we are today, I understand where we are tonight, I understand what we need to do as a committee, I understand trying to make the best of, of the situation we have, and at the end of the day, in terms of fairness, probably no one's happy, so that probably means it's about fair, both in terms of what the towns have committed and what we're getting. But the other thing is, you know, I've been on this committee now three years, and every, since I've been on, we've either had or discussed an override, to no avail. So as we move forward, to me, yes, I think we need to have that conversation, but I don't think the schools, to your second point that I really agree with, I don't think the schools should be the driver of that charge. So, the schools, again, if we end up with 1.8 million roughly increase, and we said 1.1 special education, that's, that's not much of an increase. So I think, depending on where we land tonight, as we move forward, I can tell you that my view next year is gonna be very different, and I don't, I'm not sure I can acquiesce to, "The schools are brought into the conversation fairly late, here's what's left, and by the way, if we are gonna do an override, it's gonna be solely based for the schools." To me, that, that's just not gonna work. So, I think you said it well.
Just a comment. I, I won't let the committee forget what we lose this year, and I won't let Mr. Lyman and Mr. McKee forget. That's, that's not, and I know the guy to my right won't let that happen either. So, that will be brought up over the course of the summer through formal conversations and informal conversations where we left, where we are. Both of us are problem solvers, and we would dump the problem, and we're trying to get the best out of our problem. But we won't let folks forget in the communities what we've lost, and a few folks on this committee have asked to bring up numbers over the past 10 years, and I think that's data that we can put together as a presentation for an override in the communities, of what's been gained in different areas and what's been lost, and, and how we've survived in that. USA came out, or US News came out with where we rank in high schools this, this year, and in high school ranks right in the middle in Massachusetts. We've said all along, we're right in the middle. Well, where does this community want to be? We get the best bang for our buck, we're in the lower quarter, we're lower 10 percent. I don't think we're seventh from the bottom anymore, but we're pretty, we're pretty close. Where does the community want to be? If we're smack and happy in the middle, we're not gonna get better than that without a formal plan and some funding to move us.
Fred?
Couple things. One, and just to address your last remark, we may be smack in the middle now, but if you look at what's going on down below, as I'm sure you do, we're not gonna be smack in the middle in a few years. We're gonna be worse. You know, there's no question in my mind that the wheels are falling off, and we are in trouble. As far as the schools driving an override, we sat back and we let the FinComs talk back and forth and sort of drive the bus a little bit this year, and we waited to hear, you know, we heard, "Oh, 10 percent, and then we're gonna do an override, and it's gonna be $2 and 1/2 million," and, okay, how much of that is for us, and where do we stand in that? Then there's no override, and this is what we can do within the levy. And all of a sudden, we're here, and it's mid to late April, it's May, and we've gotta get our, everything moving. So that's why I say I feel we really need to be, this is what our needs are, all right? I'm sure police and fire are going to be doing the same thing, and we would all stand together, because police and fire, if you know what's going on in Whitman, and I hope there's no bad guys watching, but it's scary. It's really scary. And Hanson's not that far away either, you know, as far as when you talk manpower and you talk about what they're able to do. You know, our medical calls are up, we've got fires that have been devastating over the past few months, so there's need all around. But I think what we need to do is we need to present our comprehensive plan and say, "Hey, here's what we need, here are our needs, here's what we want to do, and let's stand behind, you know, or beside, I should say rather, the other departments that are gonna be on this override." We all work together with it, but we need to drive our own bus. That's the way I feel.
Bob?
I have a couple of things. I'm concerned about the commitment for the override. I've been on this committee for a number of years, and I agree, you hear override, override, override. I don't know how much information is disseminated to see how important it is to schools. I think people take the schools for granted, which kind of aggravates me a little bit. It seems like this time of year, we're always talking about losing staff, which is the wrong thing to do. I agree with Jeff that there should be future budget meetings starting as soon as town meeting is over. The towns have talked about this, getting together with the schools, but I haven't seen it happen yet. Every time we try to get a committee together, they may meet once or twice, and nothing is that formalized, there's nothing that comes out of it. It's very frustrating, and nothing is consistent, and we find ourselves, as Fred said, at this point, every single year, it comes down to, "We need this, but we have to go for this, because this is what the town can afford to give us." The schools, in my opinion, are probably one of the most important commodities in the town. Educate your children, it's educated probably a lot of the police force, the fire department, public works department, I'm sure there's a number of them went through the school. In their education back then, they probably had more choices than what goes on now. And as an educator, that really bothers me, that we seem to be going, slipping backwards. I feel badly for the two administrators, because their job is not easy when you have to cut staff. Morale, I think, gets affected when you have to cut staff. People get upset. The 8 and 1/2 percent figure is a lot less than what we've talked about, so if that's what we have to go for, I hope there is a genuine commitment between the towns and the schools, and, and of course, the townspeople themselves, to support the schools and support this override. Something needs to be done. The legislature doesn't even want to do anything, although they're talking about increasing the budget, but I don't know how that's gonna affect us. That's where it has to come from. I think the state needs to look at what's going on and realize that a lot of schools, a lot of communities are in dire need such as us, and if they're not gonna help us, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
Okay.
Ally can go first, Ally can go first. I'll go after.
I just have a question. I remember last week, and we had, you already touched base on it, that at, I think it was at 6 and 1/2 percent assessment to the towns, no other department would lose anybody. Is that correct? Just the schools? Or was it at 8 and 1/2 percent, no other departments would lose anybody, just the schools?
I believe it was at the 8 and 1/2.
The 8 and 1/2. So still, it's just the schools that are losing 19 positions, not counting the teachers that took early retirement, resigned, or are not coming back due to contractual...
It's 19 total, so we include all of that. It's just either we're gonna replace them or not, so, but it's 19 positions.
So it's still...
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, so it's still...
Robbie?
So I believe I've read everything, and just echo what everybody else has said. I, I agree 100 percent. If I'm correct, I don't think Whitman has a choice, they have to do some type of override in the fall. I believe so. Right, Fred?
Pretty much. I mean, the budget's...
So I mean, that's, that seems like it's gonna happen. In conversations that I've had, and Bob and Jeff and I and Christine had meetings with the town administrator in Hanson and the town accountant a couple of months ago now, the town accountant had even said, and he's said a couple of times, that we're gonna need to do an override to be sustainable as far as Hanson goes, because sustainability's something that they're looking at just across the board for everything. It doesn't matter whether it's school, highway, police, fire, town hall, whatever it is. And that's something that, I know the chairman of the board of selectmen, he and I have had many conversations, as I know other people in Hanson have in the last week with him, almost on a daily basis as far as getting Hanson to, to come up to the 8 and 1/2 percent. So I think that there is a commitment there that's different. One thing this year that is definitely different, this has hit my house personally, as of today, and Jeff's aware of it, 'cause I went up knocking on his door today about it, because I've got a 15-year-old who's in high school, and it's very, very interesting, and, and I like to see it, that more students are aware as to what's going on, they want to stay in it. An email came out today from a couple of students, very well crafted, which I'll be answering, about their concerns with it, and it isn't even just the schools, it's just everything in town, and how it runs for both towns, and what the difficulties are with it. You know, but I got hit today with the guidance position that's getting cut here at Whitman-Hanson. It's somebody that my son goes to all the time, and to actually sit there with that person today during, during our meeting, and she's like, "No, I'm the one that's getting cut." Yeah. So anybody that knows my wife, 'cause I know Bill Trantin knows her. Yeah, my household's fun right now. So anyway, I'll digress on it, but I mean, nobody likes it. Nobody likes it. Unfortunately, they're just, there's not a lot of money to go around, and I mean, and everybody can sit there and point fingers as to all kinds of things that have played into this, but right now, here's, I guess here's the difference from last year. Last year, it was brought up that an override was gonna have to happen, and we didn't do any legwork on it, I guess. Like Fred said, we let the towns kind of run it and do whatever with it. This is where we have to get together. Like everybody said, you have to do it with the other town departments, you know, to get everything going. And I think Hanson would hopefully be in a position in the fall to do it. Same thing, that, you know, something, I know they're looking at a new highway department building, I'm not sure if it's gonna come up in the October meeting or anything like that for, or if it's a year old, I'm not sure where that sits, but, but at least there is discussion amongst the board of selectmen, the FinCom, stuff like that, which is something different that we haven't seen in years past. But I think, actually, I know, that starting on Tuesday, we have to stop pushing on it, stop pushing on it. Because one thing that I've always said in Hanson anyway, and I, and I honestly don't know if it's happened, so not to put anybody on the spot, but I've said department head meetings, these guys should be there. If not every department had meeting, well, at least come in quarterly or something like that, just to give an update as to, here's what's going on, because they are part of the towns, you know? And, and the good thing is, they're both very friendly with both police and fire chiefs in the town, just like Ernie is with both the DPW superintendent, the highway superintendent, water superintendent in Hanson. So there is an incredible amount of teamwork that goes on behind the scenes that most people never see, and it goes on, on a daily basis, but now we need to take that and, I guess, politic, for lack of a better word, to push things forward. Go ahead.
All right, I just want to be clear that we were asked to start this budget process two months earlier than we normally did, and on that first Wednesday in December when we had our meeting, we presented the exact same budget that you see in front of you. We didn't change, we didn't deviate, we presented the exact same thing. So I know that everybody said we got a plan for an override, and then we have to make sure that we stick to it and we keep doing the same thing. Well, I'm wearing out this seat right now, because we've had 300 school committee meetings since December, but we didn't change. We stayed the same. It is now the, the Wednesday before the Monday town meeting, and it's the, it's now, it's the proof is in the pudding. I guess what I'm trying to say is, we presented what was a level service budget. We kept presenting what was a level service budget. What changed was we went from negative 6 percent cut, negative 3 percent cut, 0 percent in the preparation of the budget, to now 8.5 assessment. So, we presented what we felt was reasonable, was best, and was responsible. I can tell you right now, I can, I can go upstairs to my office and present what's needed in a logical override for the schools, for sustainability, and to actually educate students the way it should be done. We can have 6,000 meetings, and I encourage those. I guarantee, what's gonna be presented at the first meeting is still gonna ring true at the last meeting. So, I don't mind 6,000 meetings, but I just want to be clear, that we were prepared, we did what we said, and we stayed with it. So I think that needs to be, everybody needs to make sure of that, because there were changes along the way, but there wasn't changes from the budget that we presented in December.
Wait a minute. Okay. Before, before we move on, just let me cap what happened last night at Hanson's town meeting. Hanson's mock town meeting, and went through all the lines like Whitman does, I'm assuming the same, and we talked about the schools. There was some discussion with finance committee about not voting it, they weren't prepared to vote it, they moved it, they, they, they left the selectmen's meeting, they went upstairs and re-discussed it. They come down after we had more or less finished and decided they agreed with what the selectmen voted support, which was 8.5 percent. In the midst of all of this, I get up and explain to them, very similar to what George is saying, very similar to what Fred said, what Robbie said, the positions being lost. But we did talk about, and it was one of the selectmen who said, "We need to have a post-mortem start." And my suggestion to that is this, okay? And I'd like to take a vote on it, but I have an 8.5 percent motion on, on the floor, but just think about this for a minute before we move to the vote. I suggest a school committee meets monthly to do its regular school committee business. Then I suggest we meet monthly with the selectmen, the FinComs, department heads, whatever you want. This is the biggest building to do it in from both towns, and start right out of the gate. It's gonna be work, but the work needs to be done. And if we put all these smart people in one room from both towns to move towards an override for the fall, because as was kicked around by a lot of people, and I agree with a lot of it, the preparation wasn't done for the override, the override probably wouldn't have made it. So if we get into a preparation position to where we're all prepared to do what we have to do, and everybody's on board, 'cause I agree with Jeff, an override for just one department will fail. It needs to be a cumulative override, I know police and fire need it, DPW needs it, so that would be my suggestion. So, ingest that for a moment before we move to the vote. Dan?
Just want to make a, maybe a couple of comments along with George there, is, most of the thing I, I really get ticked off on out there is all the misinformation, constantly, you know, and especially like last night when the posting went out that the school was trying to take away the Whitman firefighters. Stuff like that has to stop. It's underhanded when they do stuff like that. We're supposed to be working together, and here, we're not even set yet on our budget, and they're saying we're trying to take them out. That's one thing, and you know, the assessment's an assessment, it's not an increase. You know, people have to learn what it is that this school system does. It's not raising an increase, it's an assessment the towns should be paying. You know, we, we get our Chapter 70 money in, we get all our other money in, and the assessment is what the town's responsible for, for the school system to work. and the assessment is what the towns responsible for, for the school system to work. The second thing, with the override, this, we meet, then we meet again. Yeah, I'm agreement with that, but this time here, like with Bob's, probably trying to do for twelve years now, we meet. If they don't show up, we just keep going and we make our presentation because obviously this starts every year, falls apart, nobody comes. It's time for us to take control. We're losing every year. Not a lot, but we keep losing. Nobody else loses. You know, we have to eat this eight and a half. It's disgusting, but we have to do it. There's no money in the towns. But we have to, as a school committee, take control and really start taking charge and take the leadership to get our school system back online. It's going to take big money to get us back where we should be. And we've been just kicking everything down the road. It's got to stop.
Mr. Boyce and then Mr. Small and then Mr. Trotter. Go ahead, Mr. ...
I can't, I didn't want to speak tonight because I beat up your air drums the last two meetings and I apologize for that. George is right on the money and so is our superintendent. And that's why these folks are here with us tonight. I've never seen more directness come out of anything that I've gone to with the schools than with these two. And I really appreciate the way that they motivate us and keep us going and keep us informed. You know, I'm probably the one that's the least involved in other meetings like FinCom and selectmen and so forth. I often say I'm a one-person household and if something happens to me, there's only two cats and what are they going to do for work? So I'm kind of covering myself in that way and working as hard as I can to make sure I always have myself prepared. And I never give up with what we need to do here. I've been at it a long, long time. I was kind of set on coming back in with ten and a half percent, but we went back and forth so many times, probably only twice last week, but it seemed like much more. And I'll go with whatever this committee votes, but my feeling was at least with ten and a half, we could figure out historically some of the money that comes from the state. They really deflated us to no end. And, you know, their secret meetings, same way. But I totally have to give Mr. C. a lot of credit in exactly what you just said, Dan. That's the thing. It's, you know, I'm sorry, I dropped off of Whitman pride because sometimes it gets a little dangerous. And I'm still thinking about all of you and all the kids and everything, but I'm trying to think about it in a way that someone is making accusations back and forth. That's pretty much it.
Go ahead, Mike. You're after and then Bob. Go ahead, Fred.
A few things I want to address. Our budget did change because we did find ways to cut, you know, afterwards and we didn't have health insurance numbers, et cetera. So things do change along the course of the year. The other thing that changed was the revenue figures from the town of Whitman. And I can speak more of Whitman. Whitman working, and we kind of forget about the diligent work that the FinCom had done in looking at revenues and coming up with different scenarios, you know, so to speak. You know, so I would like to, you know, make recognition of that. Also, we got to a point where folks in Whitman, department heads, instead of taking their full raise, are only taking half their raise. So they're making a personal sacrifice and I think that, you know, should be recognized. You know, as far as that goes. So, you know, there have been many sacrifices made over the course of the budget season. Now, yes, we can come out and we can estimate that our energy costs are going to increase as much, our teachers, et cetera, et cetera. This has to be a three-pronged approach. Okay? Number one, I think we do need to lead our own charge. Number two, I think that we need to keep looking at everything we do within our budget and within our costs and try and always improve on ways to save money. And number three, we need a very good override and make the public aware of what we need in order to perform the functions that we should be performing as fair to our kids. I hate to use a sports analogy, but sometimes a running back will take two steps back so he can find a hole and head for a touchdown. Eight and a half percent, yeah, it's not good, but I think it's the best of a bad situation.
Mike?
Yeah, I think after last night's selectmen's meeting, I think Bob, we both took away that I think we focused so much on Whitman on this budget process. I think that we learned last night that we skipped over a little of Hanson. And that's one thing I admit that we didn't go and talk to Hanson. Like last night, and they did give us the eight and a half, but they weren't happy about it. They weren't happy with us and no one left happy. So I think next year, we do need to focus a little more on maybe, you know, quarterly or bi-quarterly meetings with the selectmen and the finance committee. That's one thing I think. We just kept saying Whitman, 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 and we didn't even keep them in the loop. I think we got to focus a little bit more on that. Yes, and I did, we did want ten percent. Ten percent, ten percent is what we kept saying, but last night, the money's not there. And it stinks. It's awful, but it's our way out to go.
Well, yeah, after listening to everything being said, I think the key word here is commitment. What is the commitment for the committee? What is the commitment for the town? What is the commitment for selectmen, town manager, and so forth? I think it's a great idea to start the budget process as soon as possible after town meeting, but what is the commitment? Does the commitment stay strong all the way through the process? And that's my main concern as far as creating that commitment. I think it's important. I think it's needed. I think it's going to be done right away. I've said that for a long time. But my concern is, what is the commitment?
Okay, so I have eight point five motion and seconded through the discussion from the committee.
Move to vote.
Second.
It's already been, you guys already did it. You said move to the vote. No further discussion?
Dawn Byers, Twenty Russell Road, foreign language. I stood up a few years ago and advocated for all students to have it. And next year, they won't, right? Middle school?
Right.
So you take two steps back, one step forward. And my child is in seventh grade. She has foreign language right now. She's going to take two steps back. Next year, she'll get to have art and music, I hope, because this year she doesn't because she takes foreign language. So it's a give and take there at the middle school because we don't have. I don't have it. So not just my kid, all the seventh graders next year. Taking a step back. I don't think anyone else at town hall is taking a step back. No firefighters taking a step back. No public safety taking a step back. These kids are. I don't know. So she will wait until freshman year and she'll start Spanish again. And that's it. I'm not going to talk about money or decisions. I just want people to know what the kids are doing, taking a step back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else before we move to the vote? Okay, so the motion is to set the assessment at eight point five percent, which is eight and a half. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Nine and one abstaining, nine to one?
Okay.
Nine to one.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So that passes. The assessment is set to the towns at eight point five percent. Okay. I have a quick letter I'm going to read to you. It is...
Your hand.
Mr. Chairman?
July reading the figures in two minutes.
You want the whole figure?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have it, Christine? I mean, I can go by these, but... In the meantime, while Christine is figuring that out, we talked about a waiver for Conley School. Mr. Chairman? I'm going to make an introduction for a minute. Most certainly. You talked about creating a... I'm going to do that right afterward. The insurance committee? No, no, nothing insurance committee. The committee, the budget committee to start after the town meeting. Can we take a formal vote on that? Yes. I'll do that while we're waiting. I entertain a motion for a formal vote to send a letter to both towns. And I believe it's up to the towns to forward it. I don't think it's our charge to directly work with department heads in the town. I think we should formally notify the town administrators and the boards of selectmen, both, that we would like to have a monthly meeting with department heads and with the selectmen to come up with some sort of a plan so the override in the fall has a good plan and get everybody in the same room. And I know that's a long motion, but I'd entertain that.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? In unanimous. Michelle, did you get that long-winded discussion?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. The assessment that is set to the town of Whitman would be one million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars for a total assessment.
No.
Fourteen million, three ninety-eight.
I'm getting, I'm getting to that, Fred. For a total assessment.
Okay, because you said the assessment to the town of Whitman. I'm sorry.
The amount increase for the assessment is one million, one twenty-seven, nine sixty-six for a total assessment of fourteen million, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Total assessment. I entertain a motion?
Some moves. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay. The assessment to the town of Hanson increase is seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars for a total assessment of nine million, six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. I entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Total certified budget. The total assessment number to both towns is twenty-four million, sixty-nine dollars, twenty-four million, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars for a total certified budget of fifty-two million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, and twenty-three dollars. I entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? You okay?
Thank you.
Okay. And we have, I'm going to, after we do this, we're going to create an insurance committee and then I'll entertain a motion to insurance. This was the letter that we sent to the DESE about the waiver for the Conley School. And I will read it. I read one hundred and eighty-day school waiver request. The chairman hazed them. Receipt of your letter, April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, in which you requested a one-day waiver from a hundred and eighty-day minimum school year requirement for Conley Elementary School in Whitman. You wrote that on Friday, March fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Conley Elementary School was forced to close due to a fast-moving stomach illness that affected both students and staff. State regulations require that each school must be in session for a minimum of hundred and eighty days each year. I take this requirement seriously and consider waiver request in the context of the longstanding policy of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that all days lost to health, weather, or safety emergencies between the first day of school and March thirty-first must be made up to ensure a hundred and eighty-day school year. I must decline your request for a waiver. Please contact Helen Benton Court Associate Commissioner of Commissions at H. Benton Court, D O E, mass.edu, with a call at seven eight one three three eight three one two on my office if you have any questions regarding this hundred and eighty-day waiver. I appreciate your commitment to the students of Whitman-Hanson and wish you a successful remainder of the school year. So that waiver has been denied. I believe that Jeff has come up with a...
Yeah, we'll do a, well, the last day of school will be, I think, what'd you say, the fourteenth? The fourteenth. We'll do that as a half day. Students must report to school, but it will be an abbreviated day for us. They need to report to school that day. We can't extend the day on Thursday as hours. They have to report. We kind of figured that.
So back-to-back half-days?
We'll do it back-to-back.
Back-to-back half-days for Conley School. Watching the cost up eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars for the buses to run that half-day.
Okay.
Fred?
Can we post that letter on our website? So, you know, if parents want to see it, they can see it. And there's a phone number there if parents wanted to call.
We tried. I thought he was going to deny it based upon regs and his past practice. But it was worth an effort and a try.
Well, we voted it. We asked for it. It got denied. I read you the letter. Okay, we're going to form an insurance company, an insurance committee to look into the costs of insurance. And it's not just, it's every type of insurance. We insure all of these buildings. We insure equipment. We insure vehicles. We insure everything.
Ourselves.
So, so we're going to form a committee to see if there's any type of savings on insurance because as was said before, we are going to turn over every single rock. We may not come up with any money. We may hit the jackpot on certain things. We don't know, but if we don't look, we're not taking due diligence and doing what we're supposed to be doing for the students of this district. Who would like to be on the insurance committee? Dan?
This all can be put off. I mean, we should form one, but in the next meeting, we have to reorg anyways and...
Yeah.
Reestablish anything, so...
No, let's get it on the books.
I'm okay with that.
I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the scope also including health insurance or not?
What, Chris?
Does it, does the scope of this insurance also include health insurance and benefits?
Every, everything we do for insurance.
So I have a conflict. That's why I'm asking so that clarifies it for me.
Christine is going to be on the committee, obviously, because she is a business manager.
And I just want to point that out, but you know, I'll sit on it.
Dan?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Fred? Eli? I'll, that's good. Okay. Okay. All right. When we can change it, Dan, as we move down for the reorg, we can change it. But I want to establish it. Let's get it started and we'll talk about that in our next meeting. I think we've done a lot on this budget. I want to commend the committee. It's been a difficult budget season. It's the first year for you two, so obviously it's been a definite learning, not so much a learning experience because you were here through bad years. And again, thank the selectmen and the finance committees and everybody that worked on it because it's been probably the most tense year that I've seen for a budget in many, many years that I've been on the committee, so...
I'd like to thank both FinComs and the town officials.
That's what I'm saying. FinComs, everybody that was involved.
Long, long hours.
Lots of hours, so I'd entertain a motion to insurance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming.